All right. You all saw what we had to talk. So, I think you were on with him. Yeah, it's just like the side of Chris. Really interesting. Silver table on the heater. This is the most. Amy Baker. Yeah. And some of the things. Yeah. And some of the things. All right. Yeah. All right. So, and some of the things. All right. Yeah. All right. So, and some of the things. 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 All right. Good evening. We will begin our regular city council meeting scheduled for October 6th at 6:00 PM. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum present?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
Excellent. So, what is our first item on the agenda, please?
It's going to be invocation given by Christopher Ash with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American and Texas flags.
Our Father in Heaven, we give thanks this evening for the country in which we live and for the community in which we live. We're grateful that we have the freedoms and the opportunity to assemble here this evening, and we pray for the leaders of this city and of this community. We pray blessings upon them, that they may be able to serve, that they will have the health and the strength that they need, that they'll have the wisdom and guidance that they need. We pray for the civil servants in this community and blessings upon them for all that they do. We pray also blessings upon our first responders in law enforcement for their tireless work, and we pray for their safety and protection. We pray that the people of this community may have their hearts turned towards civility and towards kindness, that we may show love to one another, that good may overcome evil, that patience and kindness may overcome intolerance and anger, and we pray in all things that we may draw closer to Thee and be a little more like Thy Son in what we do and what we think and what we say. And we pray this now in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
By the allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and in this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Thee, Texas, one and one single, God and God alone. Our next item, please.
Agenda item 3A, Introduction and Welcome to Moses Vitis with the Roy City Chamber's Emerging Leaders Program.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to say thank you and welcome to Moses. He is here. He's going to be shadowing myself and Yvonne in Economic Development. He's here for a city council meeting tonight. We've invited him to a Municipal Development District meeting as well. But the purpose of the program is to take outstanding young future leaders that are in the Roy City School District, and this is your third year. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. I can put you on the spot. Is there anything you want to tell these guys about the program?
This is his first council meeting.
All right. Yeah.
About the program?
Yeah, about the program. Yeah.
Um, we're just a group of high school juniors who are learning how to be a leader. Um, yeah.
And how to come up with things on the spot when Matt? I told him he didn't have to say a word, and then I made him do it, so.
Well, we have. It looks like we have an extra spot up here for tonight. Let's put those skills to the test.
Thank you. Well, if you don't mind, we're just going to take a quick photo, if that's okay with y'all. If y'all want to come down, you can. That'd be awesome. Okay.
Okay. Go ahead. This is his one. Okay. How many have you seen?
No.
One, two, three. That one over there here. One, two, three. Okay. Thank you so much. Two years ago.
Okay. Next item, please.
Next will be Agenda item 3B, Mayor Greenberg's Report on Texas Municipal League Newly-Elected City Officials' Orientation and Meeting with Texas House Representative Katrina Pearson.
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. Back in August, I had the opportunity to attend the Texas Municipal League New Member Orientation, and I also had the privilege, I think it was like just a short time later, to meet with our state representative Katrina Pearson. So, I want to take just a few moments tonight to share some of what it is that I learned, what I participated in, and how it will directly benefit our city, our council, and our residents. I deeply appreciate the trust you place in me to attend meetings, trainings, and seminars on the taxpayers' behalf, and I want you to know I'm committed to making sure those opportunities truly benefit FATE. At the TML Orientation, I was fortunate to learn a great deal about parliamentary procedure, specifically how I, as the mayor, can better preside over these meetings to ensure that ideas are heard, discussed, and debated, but not bogged down or sidetracked in violation of Robert's Rules of Order. Our goal as a council is always to create a space where every idea can be considered respectfully and efficiently. I did learn that Robert's Rules of Order is designed to keep meetings running as efficiently as possible, and when my wife found out about that, she said, "Uh-oh, that's going to be the number-one thing you have to learn." So, I'm working on it. I'm not going to say it's perfect, you know, today, but we're getting there. I also gained valuable insight into how we can better utilize workshops and town halls to keep you well-informed and engaged, so you'll see more of those opportunities moving forward as we continue to improve the way we share information and conduct the business of FATE. Another area of focus during the orientation was on municipal budgets and tax rates. Well, much of what I learned reaffirmed the importance of transparency, accountability, and fiscal responsibility in local government. My hope is that our recent budget and tax rate process demonstrated our shared commitment to those principles and to the conservative approach that guides our financial decisions. I also attended several sessions on land use regulations and legal requirements, which strengthened my understanding of my role as both mayor and presiding officer, particularly as we continue to make thoughtful, lawful decisions about growth and development in our city, an issue I take seriously so that FATE is set up for success in the decades to come. Now, turning to my meeting with Representative Katrina Pearson, this was an important introductory conversation to reaffirm a strong working relationship between the city of FATE and our state representative. I shared with her early in the meeting that I was firmly committed to eliminating our taxpayer-funded lobbyist, which we did achieve in the last, or in our recent budget vote, and that as your mayor, I intend to serve as the citizens' lobbyist. I would like to be someone that you can rely on to go down and speak on your behalf on issues as they pertain to the state and the legislature. It's both a patriotic duty, but I also think it's a wonderful honor to be able to stand before our state lawmakers and speak on the behalf of the people of FATE. Representative Pearson and I discussed MUD reform, a topic that continues to present challenges not only here but across Texas. We talked about how this issue sits at the intersection of private property rights and the needs of growing cities, and the importance of finding a balanced approach that restores accountability and transparency. And what I mean by that specifically is how we can make those processes more open to the public to know what's going on. Sometimes the biggest issue I find that people have, both citizens and people trying to learn more, are that you just don't know what's going on, and you don't know how to find out that information. So, we talked about that. We also reviewed various pieces of legislation, including those related to land use and local authority, seeking clarity on terms like "good development," how those are defined, and how we can prevent Austin from eroding the local control that our city and so many others value deeply. Representative Pearson and I also discussed the ongoing statewide efforts to reduce property taxes. We both recognize that these proposals are long-term in nature, but shared an optimism about the continued dialogue and commitment to finding sustainable ways to lower the burden on Texas taxpayers. Finally, we touched base on the recent developments with redistricting. Again, this was a while ago. We had not yet moved into the maps being challenged by the courts now. An unprecedented move by the state of Texas, but a shared excitement to see how it shapes representation heading into the midterm elections. In closing, I do want to take a moment to recognize Ms. Vicki and Ms. Samantha for their tremendous help in making both of these trips possible. Their work behind the scenes ensured that everything fit within my schedule and allowed me to represent FATE effectively and on time. Thank you very much, and thank you to the council and our residents for allowing me the honor of serving this city and continuing to learn, advocate, and lead on your behalf. Thank you. Okay. The next item, please.
Next, we'll move to public comment. I've received two requests to address the council during this portion of the meeting, first being John Rosen, address 406 Azalea Drive.
Just coming for you today, mainly talking about growth for the city, you know, how it's growing, what methods it's growing, things like that, and also a little bit aside as accountability for, you know, some of the developers and all. You know, some of them tend to try and get away with a, you know, easier to ask forgiveness than permission. I can speak from experience in that respect with the place, you know, my partner and I had purchased. We went out and saw, and it was not exactly green field, but we had, you know, lovely trees. The building started going in, and they tore down a number of trees, about 40, 50 feet high, and they received effectively a slap on the wrist, is what I've been told, a fine. But, you know, we're looking at, you know, houses or apartments that are barely, you know, 15 feet off of our fence and two stories, so, you know, they're looking into everything. You know, it's one of those things that's, you kind of wonder, okay, you know, again, it's obviously they're easier to ask for forgiveness than permission, you know, and we don't, didn't really see a whole lot of or hear anything about, okay, well, what's being done about something like that. Also, moving forward, as someone in high tech, I love the way the city is overall growing. I appreciate the growth, but almost most, almost all of our growth for the industry side seems to be retail, you know, low-level commercial, food and stuff, and most of the tech in this area is still going to be out in Dallas or Plano or worse, and we're dealing with the bottlenecks of 66 and 30. You know, I would love to see, and everything I've been looking at for inquiries, a couple people I've spoken to in the city government, and I believe one of the city managers or planners is like, there's nothing growing for that side of things. And with the cost of living out here, the cost of houses and some of that stuff, retail, you know, fast food, that kind of stuff is not going to pay the bills for a lot of people, and it's just making it worse bottleneck for trying to get in and out. So, I'm hoping we can, you know, do a push, a request to get something more meaty, as it were, you know, for people who don't want an hour and a half, two-hour hike out to somewhere where, you know, a lot of companies are now requesting people to come back in the office, hybrid or full-time again, you know, and so that's one thing that a lot of people have been running into. So, that's just the overall, I know, perhaps a little less homes, so until we can balance out, you know, how people can get to their work and stuff, because also there's very little public transportation. So, if people need to go somewhere, you know, you have to have your own car, or you're a little bit stuck, really. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Willie Rushing, address 641 England Street.
Good afternoon, good evening, city council, mayor and public servants. I come today as a kid. I grew up on playgrounds, so I learned how to skate, learned how to bike, learned how to play drums, learned how to fly his frisbees. Talking to a lot of kids as I go to the parks, I visit the parks a lot, hanging out, playing basketball, utilizing the facilities that you guys have provided for us here at FATE. But lately, I've been talking with kids who are skateboarders and learning how to skate, and they're asking like, "When are we going to get a fake skate park?" I say, "I don't know. I have no idea. I would like to get that information myself." So, that's why I'm coming today to see if I can get any information from you guys, if there's plans for a skate park or something for the kids to learn how to, you know, skate. In my experience, the older kids are helping the younger kids how to skate, and they'll learn how to do ollies and all that type of stuff. And I would, Alex, I didn't know for sure if there was a plan in place. I hadn't been to any of the park and recreation board meetings lately, but I'm quite sure there has been some discussion about skate parks for FATE. The closest one we have right now is in Wiley, Texas, which is probably about 12 miles from here, and then the ones that the kids mentioned is the one that's in Garland, which is about 20 miles away, which is fine. I mean, I drive my kid over there once in a while to hang out, and I try to relive my younger days, but my ankles, my ankles are not what they used to be, like a lot of us. But if there is any information that you guys can put out possibly, or just do a, some type of survey with the kids at the park and see if there's something they want to do, maybe you all can decide if that's going to be feasible for the kids, if the city can, you know, maybe put that in the budget. I'm not sure, but there's just something that I wanted to discuss with you guys, and maybe someone can feed me some information, or we can have a discussion about it. And I'm here to help. As you all know, I love the kids. Y'all know I love the kids. We're passionate about kids, and any information will be greatly appreciated. I thank you guys, and says is bone.
Thank you very much. Okay. The next item, please.
Next will be item number five, which is Consent Agenda.
Okay. And before we move forward with that, I would like to take 5C and 5D from the Consent Agenda, please. Any other items from the Consent Agenda that council would like to see removed? Okay. Then for the remaining 5A, B, E, F, G, H, and I, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the Consent Agenda excluding items C and D.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Please vote. Okay. The motion passes six to zero, so the Consent Agenda minus items C and D are passed. Okay. So, let's go ahead, and before we move on to item six, can we look at 5C and 5D then? We'll begin with 5C. So, Mr. Manival, did you want to lead a discussion in this?
Yes. First, I wanted to clarify what we're actually looking at doing on 5C. The memo from Raju that Michael used to put this on the agenda for refers to something to do with purchasing contracts, and that seemed to be repeated on item 5D. So, I didn't, Mark, I think, wanted to talk about 5D, so I just wanted to know, are we covering the change in purchasing on 5C or 5D? It looks like they're on both documents. So, there's, they're in the policies, and they're also in the purchasing policy. They're in both. So, there's the biggest, go ahead, Raju.
So, we are changing the policy, excuse me, in the financial management policy. So, once we change that, we also have to change in the purchasing policy also, because both are referring to the contract less than $100,000. So, both have to coincide, you know, one cannot conflict with the other one.
Okay. Well, I think Mark wanted to address something having to do with the purchasing policy, so we may both be talking. I'm going, I have something to say about 5C, and it sounds like Mark will probably have something to say about 5C.
Yeah, well, that part of 5C.
Okay. All right. What I wanted to see is if there's a way that we could add something into the financial management policy to call for an update of the check report that's made available on the Financial Transparency Link. I've been referred to that to get information to back up what's on the monthly financial report, and when I go there, there's not, it's not updated, it's only updated through March.
Yeah. I update the transparency page per the state requirement, the last three fiscal years and the most recent quarter for the current fiscal year. So, that is the state requirement. So, we can always update every month if you choose to.
Okay. Well, when I look at the monthly finance report that we just approved as part of the Consent Agenda.
Yes, sir.
There's a key page on there. It's the seventh page, in which it shows the expenses for the month, but it's only the expenses by department.
Correct.
So, I was just, as an example, the facilities department was like $93,000, but in the budget, there's over 20 expense lines, and with what we're able to see, we have no idea what account numbers we're spending money in. And I could go to, if the check report was updated monthly, you know, maybe at the same time, just, you know, rather than updated quarterly, or I'd be able to, I could pull it, I could filter it. We wouldn't need a new finance report in the monthly report. I could, I could filter through it and find what I need.
Yeah. It's pretty easy. I can do that in five minutes.
That's what I thought. That's why I thought this would be an easy add. What, I want to ask for something else that I think would probably, hopefully be an easy add, too, because if it's a report, and these are in the financial system, right now the check report has six columns. It has vendor number, vendor name, payment date, payment type, payment amount, and number, which is like the remittance or check number. I could get to what I would look for on the monthly expense report if it had just four more columns, and that would be department number, department name, account number, and account name. And I would assume if, you know, all of these, all these things are going into the same system, hopefully that would be an easy add also.
I can do that in six minutes.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. I'll have a, I'll have the full meal then, instead of, instead of just the burger. Okay. Great. Well, I don't know if we need to make a motion on that. It's just a request of Raju.
Are you wanting this request moving forward, like to change the policy on this to add in?
Well, that we would see, that that would be available, that if someone on the council got the monthly financial report and they see these lumped numbers for a month. type, payment amount, and number, which is like the remittance or check number. I could get to what I would look for on the monthly expense report if it had just four more columns, and that would be department number, department name, account number, and account name. And I would assume if, you know, all of these were, all these things are going into the same system, hopefully that would be an easy add also.
I can do that in six minutes.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. I'll have a, I'll have the full meal then, instead of, instead of just the burger. Okay, great. Well, I don't know if we need to make a motion on that. It's just a request of Raju.
Are, are you wanting this request moving forward, like to change the policy on this to add in?
Well, that we, that we would see, that that would be available, that if someone on the council got the monthly financial report and they see these lumped numbers for a month, that they could go to the check report and then they could just filter on it. They could filter by department and account and they could see, oh, it's made up of spending in these areas. It would just be an easy.
Yes, sir. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
I don't think we have to add, I think we can do it administratively. The policy doesn't get into that kind of detail.
Okay. Six minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm on the clock.
Okay. Okay, Vicki will order dinner for you.
Okay, and so.
That was it.
Okay.
That was, that was it.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to discuss five D then before we finalize voting on five C.
One hundred thousand is part of five C also.
Oh, were you talking about that too?
Yeah. That's actually in five C, or five D as well.
No, I know. I'm saying, Mr. Manival, were you going to address that or did you want me to go ahead and turn it over to?
Turn it over to Mark. He wanted to talk about that.
Okay, perfect. All right, Mr. Hatley.
I asked to have this removed from the consent agenda. I mean, I know we're going from, it's, right now, it's 50,000 that can be spent without, coming before the council, it's asking to be increased to 100,000. I know up till about, what was it, about two, maybe three years, two or three years ago, it went from 35,000, I think, to 50,000. And I know the state laws changed on this to, to increase that. Now, it looks like it's for having to do with bids, that, that will allow us to, to, I mean, to essentially, I mean, to bid without going towards the council for anything up to 100,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, on that one.
I did, I did prepare a small PowerPoint, just in case we needed it. If you want to throw it up there, to explain the, just for context. But carry on, carry on, this is discussion. I'll have to find it. Oh, boy. City Council. That sounds like the one. All right, Carrie, if you like, I can run through this or you can carry on if you like, sir.
I'll go ahead and watch.
Okay, great, great. So, so we wanted to kind of do a quick, Omar put this together for me, just a quick review of what kind of the changes in purchasing costs, especially over the last decade. So things that cost, we're paying about 50 to 100,000 for items that cost, used to cost 10 to 49,000. So a lot of this is cost escalation that's driving policy changes, including higher procurement thresholds. The result is routine purchases are now straining the budgets and slowing us down on our operations. So common, here's some common purchases that used to be cheaper than 50,000, that are now popping the 50,000 threshold. Police and public works vehicles, we're able to do a lot, we do a lot of leasing through this really cool program with Enterprise. We actually make money on our fleet, which is really cool. But if we need to buy like a specific piece of equipment that doesn't fit in the, in the leasing program, then typically, a lot of these will be independent purchases. Also, small facility repairs are going to bust, a lot of those are going to bust the cap. Parks equipment, playgrounds, irrigation systems, pool systems, IT hardware and software upgrades, and then small paving and sidewalk projects. If they're, if you bundle them, you can get into that limit pretty quickly. So here's some, kind of just some fun costs. A police pickup, we don't really use pickups, but I think the sheriff's office used pickup. We might have used the one once, chief, I think we did, maybe once we had, oh, we get two, couple over the last few years. So typical police pickup is you're, you're about, used to be about 35,000 or about 65,000. Playgrounds, just a kind of a little basic one, is going to be over 50. A server upgrade, typical project's going to be over. Small HVAC and even a road, the fun one here that we found is the road patching project, like just a little repair job. So wire costs rising, so construction materials, inflation, higher labor and equipment costs. We've got kind of continuous supply chain issues. And of course, we've got more technology, which is fun, but also we've got cybersecurity and all these other things that are helping drive costs. Increased service demands across our departments are also pushing up those costs. So policy, some of the policy impacts, Texas Senate Bill 1173 allowed for the procurement threshold increase from 50 to 100,000. And we've been working on that, I would say we, but the Texas Milis believe it's been working on that for years and years and years. We finally got it done. And that's been, it used to be 50 and then even before then used to be 25,000. And so cost growth, really not really a policy leniency, is kind of driving the higher, higher limits. And I do have, I do have a contract, actually, this arrived today from Scott, or Scott, there he is. We're seeing a lot of these issues in public work. So this, this is a proposal from, from roadway asset services, and it kicks off our roadway assessment program. Robotics got bought by Michelin and then they've kind of gone non-functional, I guess it looks like. So we were upgrading to kind of a real, kind of the ground, it's got the ground penetration technology and it's got these cameras that look for fissures in the pavement and so forth. So part of our pavement management strategy is to kind of enter, is to kind of launch with this. And so this actually arrived today. The contract is through byboard, so we don't have to bid it. It's already been prebid. It's been prebid through three purchasing pools. So the purchasing side has been taken care of, so that's, that's good. But in order for me to sign this tomorrow and get it started, I need council approval tonight. If I can't get the purchasing limit changed, then it's going to wait till November 10th, which is our next council, because we've already passed our deadline for the posting of the agenda, legal review and so forth. So this kind of is, it doesn't really happen very often, but kind of it's a real world example of our pavement management system could start tomorrow or it could start November 11th.
Ms. Huffman?
So when are we notified when you sign contracts like this? And I probably should know the answer to that question, but I'm asking just the same. So if we're, if we're not approving the expense, you're making a decision for a contract. And so when do we know about that?
You don't, you don't actually get individual notifications, but you see the budget report in the, in the financials each month.
Once the expense is incurred?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Or if it's encumbered, I think, if it's encumbered, it also shows up, doesn't it, Raju?
Yes.
So once we've, we've obligated it.
Mr. Hatley?
Well, yeah, what I was going to say is, a lot of those are, I mean, are very good reasons to have them. I can think of a couple. If something were controversial, that you, you might be going, oh, this would be really, really good, and go ahead and approve it. I, I'm going to bring something up focused advocacy. That was on the consent agenda last year. That's how a lot of people found out about it. It, it needed to be put on the consent agenda to get council approval because it was above the 50,000 threshold. That obviously is something a lot of people had issues with. That's, I guess, my big concern on this is, could something in that 60, 70, 80, 90,000 range might be controversial that, that people would, and we wouldn't know about it necessarily until on those. But I don't trust you. It's, it's, people have put trust in us. And releasing that, that bit of oversight might be, I don't know, I might have a little bit of some concerns with it on that. That's just my opinion. Overall, I think it would be, do very, I mean, there's some very worthy things, trucks, things like that, things that we do need. But that's my view.
Well, I'll ask this question, just for clarification then, because that's a, that's a, a good point. As far as when we do the budget, and so we're, we're operating on our new budget that we just passed after that budget season, where would, where would this, like, was this kind of in the anticipated needs? We knew this was coming. Was this ever part of a presentation? I know we don't go down to the super detailed level, but how would we know if, if it were something where, if we didn't expressly say, no, we don't want to move forward with, with focused advocacy, obviously, you wouldn't go behind anybody's back. I'm certainly not saying that either. But, but what about those future contracts? And how would that, how would that work? Would we have already approved something like that in the budget to begin with?
I'm trying to think of one that's in that range, that, really, I don't do most of the purchasing. It's really the folks in the audience there, it's Chief and Steve and Scott. So I'm trying to think of something that's in the budget this year, that's in that range.
Would they have known about that in the budget?
Oh, would they have known about this?
Is that the question?
Oh, like, oh, for this pavement management? Typically, no. I would have, I'm going to, I plan to sign this tomorrow and get it to Scott and get that going. So you typically would not know about that? You'd get the report after we've already executed it?
But, Michael, I think they're asking, was that a budgeted item for this fiscal year?
It is in the road maintenance. We have a large budget in the road maintenance system, so it is a planned expense.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was my big question. So this was part of what we were working on these past few months in terms of passing the budget.
It's part of our Fund 201 road maintenance system, essentially.
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
So, so just to clarify, this is directly, what we're, what we're talking about is increasing your authority to actually purchase primarily goods. So, so I, I think for a point of clarification, just to make you very comfortable, on a deal like focused advocacy, would that potentially fall under this? Or it could, but it's not really the purchase of goods, purchase of service, that's kind of a policy type deal?
It would, of course, you know, if we, if we did something like that, we'd have to face political consequences for, because it's not in the budget. Council's expressed a desire to kind of move there into a direction where the, we're working more, we're working more independently, we're working more directly with our state representatives, our state senator, the mayor's tied in. This is also a very effective system, but we're not going to individual, we're not hiring individual lobbyists and, and doing that sort of thing anymore. So we're not, we're not undertaking lobbyist contracts, but any kind of, I mean, really, any kind of service or good would count under the limit.
Can I add something?
Please.
The budget is approved by, on a fund level. So we have like 34, 35 different funds. So all the contract individually is not included in that budget. So anytime when we have a contract for the approved budget over 100,000, we need the approval from the council. We're increasing the threshold from 50 to 100. So.
I think that it would be really problematic, just looking at your presentation that you gave, if y'all had to come and get approval for every pothole. And that, it looks like that is within that price range, just to take care of a road, to patch it up would be more than what we allow right now. So I don't know, I mean.
That was a significant patch job.
Right.
The little potholes are not doing that.
Sure.
But it could, we've done, we did a road, we had an emergency repair back, we had to do a culvert because the culvert failed, one of the older subdivisions, and caved in on the road. And so we had to get our folks in there. That was right up against the limit. I think we were like 45,000, something like that. And so.
And so if something like that goes on, it would have to wait until the next council meeting or until we could actually put it on the agenda.
There is a, there is a provision for emergency purchases. So we'd have to, we'd check with the city attorney just to make sure our interpretation was of emergency purchase was accurate, so we don't get in trouble.
Okay.
Mr. Hatley?
So we do have a, you know, an emergency that if something were an urgent, something urgent, we could actually go in and come in and do that. How much notice would we need to give on that?
So there's always been an exception for emergency expenditures. It's very narrowly interpreted, or at least I interpret it very narrowly. But certainly, you know, an example of, you know, a road cave in is a good example, where those get approved. And so you get people out there to make those repairs without competitive bidding, even if it's well over, even under the old law, even if it's well over 50,000, you get them in there to repair it because it's an emergency.
So there is sort of a failsafe in there, in case we needed to do something that was urgent?
Yeah, there already is, yes.
On there. But we have council meetings roughly every two weeks on average, so.
Yes, usually.
On there. Sometimes you get that little three-week gap.
Yeah, we had a three-week gap this week, or last time.
Ms. Huffman?
So I'm all for checks and balances. It helps keep things transparent. And is there a way to have at least mayoral approval for certain expenses, like from 50 to 100? Or does it have to be whole council?
No, that's would be against the form of government.
Okay.
So.
But thank you, Ms. Huffman.
But just so somebody knows, besides what you're proposing.
And really, and we could run a quick, you know, analysis of how, how, but how long this is. But really, we've had this, I mean, this kind of, we've kind of had this purchasing authority in the past. And so what we're asking really is just, can we maintain the purchasing authority we've had 10 years ago?
Yeah, I, I think I'm good with it. As, and I appreciate what you had said a second ago about, you know, with, with respect to focused advocacy, because, Mr. Hatley, I think your point is well taken there. You recognize the direction that the council's wanting to go, and so we'll make those decisions within that. And so hearing that, I'm, I'm pleased to have heard that. And so I'm good with increasing the amount so that you can essentially continue to do what you're doing on a, on a daily and weekly basis, just given the fact that costs have increased. Ms. Chen?
Could we, I mean, for the 1 to 50,000, obviously, that's already in there. But anything over 50,000 up to 100,000, could you do it to where, you can go ahead and purchase it, but it has to be in the consent, the next meeting's consent agenda so that we are made aware, rather than, rather than, you know, us having to find out at the end of the month and the middle of, you know, the financial report?
So, so probably the, could I make a different suggestion?
Sure, yeah, no, whatever's helpful and effective.
So what you do see sometimes cities do, when they have, cities have these discussions, though, who had these discussions when it went from 35 to 50, is, is that they have a report in the council agenda. So it's not a vote, because obviously, he's got the authority. If y'all pass this, you've given him the authority, he's going to sign the contract. It's not like if you don't approve it, like, if you give, right, you can't undo the contract.
To me, it's similar to like whenever we talk about approving Andrew's travel expenses, and he's already traveled, but we have to approve them. So again, I think that that's dumb, but at least we know about it, right?
Right.
And this would provide a little bit of transparency to where if there was anything that was over 50,000, it would trigger.
Right. So it would be not so much a voting item, but an informational item?
Yes, that's, that's what I'm saying. So if anything over 50,000, we're notified at the very least. And then if it is something that we don't like, we can address that in a different way. I mean, the same way that we do with focused advocacy, the next year, we decided to remove it. We may not be able to do something right then, but at least it would provide transparency.
Stephen had another good suggestion. We could instead send, just an update, like in the weekly update?
Yeah.
We have a weekly update?
Weekly report.
We could put in the weekly report.
That would be fun. Just so that there's some, you know, any, anytime we have a big purchase, we're informed, basically.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kelly?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. We approve item five C.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Oh, do we need something that states in there that it will be put on the city manager report? Or is that just something we just throw on there to administrative?
I don't think you necessarily need to make a change to the actual policy.
Okay.
Michael's heard the direction, and I'm sure that will occur.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, please vote. Oh, okay, motion passes six to zero. Sorry, I was looking at the, looking at that top one, waiting for Mr. Harper, who's not here, to vote. Okay. And so now we'll go to our five D. Do I have a motion on five D?
Make a motion. We approve item five D.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Okay. Next item on the agenda, please. Ms. Vicki?
Okay, agenda item 6A. This is an application for a zoning change request from agriculture to residential estate to allow for one new single-family home. First will be staff presentation, followed by applicant presentation, public hearing, and then ultimately, consider action on ordinance number 02025-040. and then ultimately, consider action on ordinance number O-2025-040.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan Wells, Director of Planning and Development Services. I'll be giving the presentation for the win property zoning request, project ID ZR-25010. So this is a proposal that we call a straight zoning request. They are requesting a change from the agricultural zoning district to the residential estate district. So currently, the property is a single lot, which would allow for a single, a single-family home. They want to be able to divide the property into two parcels, which would result in parcel sizes less than the required five-acre minimum, which applies to the agricultural zoning district. The property currently has never been actively zoned, so the standards default to the agricultural district. They need to plat the property in order to sell the parcels. In order to plat the property appropriately, it needs to be rezoned to residential estate. So there's kind of a cascade of steps that need to occur in order for them to develop the property as requested. So currently, there are two, two assessor's lots on a single tract totaling two and a half acres in size. The property is located on North Smith Road, right at that really strong, sharp, double-ninety-degree turn, right as you're going up to the first left. It's right there at the end. Again, the property currently falls under agricultural zoning standards, and it's currently vacant. Here's the parcel in question. Again, you can see it's right there at that major turn on North Smith Road, just north of 552. So for a zoning request, there are three criteria that I know y'all are quite familiar with. First is the criterion of whether the proposal aligns with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans. The current, the future land use plan designation is rural reserve, of which residential estate is a representative zoning district. A single-family use is a representative use for, for that rural reserve place type. Looking at the character of the, of the surrounding neighborhood, as you can see by the aerial, the whole area is characterized by either large undeveloped agricultural lands, but along North Smith Road, there are a number of approximately one to three-acre residential properties that have been developed over time. For example, the Coyote Run development on the west side of North Smith, just, just up the road a little ways, as well as a couple of one-acre lots immediately to the north. And there was some residential estate zoning that the council approved, just slightly north on North Smith Road last year. And so among the three criteria, staff have found that all three of those have been met. For the public noticing, of course, we submitted the notice to the newspaper. For the zoning request, we also mailed notices to all properties within two hundred feet. We also, per recently passed state law, we also posted a sign on the property notifying a passer's by that the property is subject to a zoning request. That came into effect September first, so in all future, current and future zoning requests, there will be signage posted on the property as well. Six mailed notices were sent ten days prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. As of today, we received no written responses to this, although we did get some phone calls, because I guess people weren't used to seeing the signs up, so they actually did email us and call us, like, hey, what's this sign about? What does it mean? So we were happy to answer those questions. Because of the minor nature of this zoning request, we didn't actually run a fiscal analysis, because it's, it's really just a very low-impact zoning change. The Planning and Zoning Commission, last month, did evaluate this proposal, and in a unanimous five to zero vote, are recommending approval of this zoning change. I'm happy to take any questions at this time. I'm not sure if the applicant is here. No, the applicant isn't here tonight, so if I could do questions now or after the public hearing?
Questions from council? Okay, seeing none. I will open the public hearing now at six forty-eight.
I have nobody signed up to speak for this item.
Okay. We will close the public hearing at six forty-eight. Okay, do I have a motion for this agenda item?
I'll make a motion, we approve, are we doing the ordinance or the zoning request on this?
You can use either.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve the ordinance number O-2025-040.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion on this agenda item? Okay, none, please vote, or we can begin voting. The motion passes six to zero. All right, next item, please.
Next will be agenda item six B. This is an application for a zoning change request from agriculture to residential suburban density one to allow for a single-family subdivision, case ZR-25-009. First is staff presentation, followed by applicant presentation, public hearing, and ultimately, considering action on ordinance number O-2025-041.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is the staff presentation for the Sundale Heights Single Family Subdivision, project ID ZR-25009. So this is a familiar property to y'all. This property has been submitted for zoning changes twice before. First was a zoning request in the beginning of the year, requesting a change of property from agriculture to R2, residential suburban density two. That was denied by council in May. The, at the, under the advisement of staff, the, in, in response to some of the, the concerns expressed by council, the applicant came back in mid of, mid of the year, and proposed a planned development with substantially similar development pattern. That, that project was denied by council in July. So, tonight, the, the applicant has before you a zoning change request of a completely different character, albeit still single-family detached, but the request is for agriculture to residential suburban density one, which is a much larger minimum lot size, and resultantly a much lower lot count being proposed with this development. And so this is allowed, despite the fact that with denied zoning cases, generally, there's a one-year waiting period, but this being a completely different zoning district, and a completely different level of intensity of the development, as the administrator, I determined that, that the R1 zoning district request was substantially different than that which was denied, so they were able to submit this application. So here with the R1 district, the minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet, whereas in the R2, the minimum lot size was five thousand square feet, so these are twice as big as, as the previous proposal, and the lot count has dropped from one hundred and two to, I think, fifty-two, as shown here. So the number of lots have about halved from the previous application. So again, here's a aerial of the, of the location of the property, located on the north side of Greenbrier Road, surrounded by various phases of reserve at Chamberlain Crossing. And here's a image of the plat, showing those fifty-two lots. Again, still taking the single access off of Greenbrier, and then the, working off of that stub from Smith Lane on the east side of the property, excuse me. So the current configuration of the property is three lots totaling nineteen-point-eight-eight acres, again, located on Greenbrier Road, directly west of North Churchill Drive. Current zoning of the property is agriculture, and it contains two houses, and previously was, had some family farming taking place on the property. So again, with the three criteria of, for a zoning request, first is whether the proposal is compatible with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans. This property and all surrounding properties were designated the suburban neighborhood place type in the 2021 Forward Fate Comprehensive Plan. R1, or residential suburban density one, is a representative zoning type for the suburban neighborhood place type, and single-family detached development is a representative land use within that place type. As for the character of the surrounding neighborhood, this subject property, as you can see on the image on the right, is surrounded by residential subdivisions. To the north, we have reserve at Chamberlain Crossing Phase Three. To the east is reserve at Chamberlain Crossing Phases One and Two. To the south is Chamberlain Crossing, and to the west, once you get past those large infill lots that are still in the agricultural zoning district, we have reserve at Chamberlain Crossing Phase Four. All of those developments around this subject property are generally within the five-to-seven-thousand square-foot lot sizes. So this would be relatively larger, as far as the lot sizes go, where the project approved, but nonetheless, it would still be in character, rather similar in, as far as being single-family detached development. The property, just immediately to the west, you can see by that kind of tan rectangle, kind of on the west, kind of southwest corner of the property, that was the white property, and it was zoned R1, the same property zoning being requested by the applicant tonight. It was requested, it was, sorry, approved R1 earlier this year. So we sent out public notices, mailed notices, posted the sign on the property, all the things that are required of us to make sure that the neighborhood is aware, and that we are being transparent in this request, and provide for feedback from the community. We mailed eighty-three letters to all those adjacent property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property. As of this afternoon, we did receive one mailed response, and that response was against the proposal. The quote from the, this is really, all the response said, it said that they bought the house currently because no one lived behind us, so, and I'll tell you, in the planning department, we hear that a lot, you know? Realtor said that there was always going to be a field. So that's, that's the only written response that we received in response to this most recent public notice. We ran a fiscal analysis, as we do for all zoning requests, of a, of a significant character. In this case, the year-one contribution to the city at full buildout would be about fifty-four thousand dollars. That would be purely in property tax and this very small amount of sales tax that we attribute to residential use. At the end of it all, the revenue-to-cost ratio with roads is about point-five-two-to-one, and the public-to-private ratio is twelve-and-a-half-to-one. And as you guys have and will continue to see, single-family detached residential generally is on the negative side of the fiscal productivity, but again, we try to look at the fiscal productivity of our community in a more holistic way, and try to balance the less productive uses with the more productive uses, and in the end, keep our community in the black and fiscally sufficient in the future. The Planning and Zoning Commission, last month, evaluated this proposal, and in a three-to-two vote, recommend approval of this zoning request. Two of the members were absent that night, and so it was a little bit of a smaller group, but it was still a slim majority recommendation for approval. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have now, or after the applicant, who is here, give their statements or the public hearing.
Questions from council? Mr. Kelly?
Ryan, one question, as it relates to the plat and, and just the layout. The intersection of Churchill Way and Greenbrier, what's the distance going to be between that intersection and the proposed entrance to this neighborhood? Do we know? It looks like it's going to be two hundred and fifty, three hundred feet.
Yeah, that's about right. I'm not, I, I don't have a magnifying glass, it's pretty small, but it looks about right, yeah.
Do we, do we have a policy on street?
Spacing?
Spacing.
Yeah, that exceed, that exceeds the street spacing policy.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Huffman?
I want to confirm that there is connectivity through to the development on Stewart Lane?
Yes, there is a stub that connects to the existing stub in Reserve Two on Stewart Lane, Reserve Phase Two, excuse me.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is the applicant giving a presentation?
Give you one, say some comments?
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I won't indulge you with yet another PowerPoint presentation after staff. I think they've fairly well, they have done a great job sort of surmising this, if you will. We listened to P&amp;Z staff, listened to council first time through, tried to reduce as much density as we could while trying to make a workable project. Appreciate all of your outreach support, and staff as well. So here for any questions, should you have them, and if there's anything we can do to be supportive, just let us know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing at six fifty-eight PM.
I have one person that has asked to speak, and that is Karen Kaiser, address 1093 North Churchill Drive.
Welcome, Ms. Kaiser.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Karen Kaiser, 1093 North Churchill, and these twenty acres but my fence line and my neighbors that live along the, what would that be, the north side of North Churchill, the reserve at Chamberlain Crossing, otherwise known as Mud Seven, we're the only south-side mud. Phase Two, that abuts this, foolishly, we paid a lot premium to abut the farmland, but I knew it didn't belong to us. It's not like a budding dedicated park or green space, and I don't think anything better than homes could come behind our homes. I appreciate the lower density, fifty-three, now down to fifty-two, homes do not seem unreasonable. And I now have learned, when you see a stub road, it's going to connect to a neighborhood someday. It just came sooner, I guess, than many of us expected, but one thing that concerns me at that stub is that there is an enormous pond filled with water exactly where Stewart Lane is going to be opened up to connect to these homes, should they be approved. And I'm sure that y'all will do something to be mindful. I've shared with the developer, the times it's come to P&amp;Z, and I spoke in public comment, or from there, that I'm just afraid the earth could kind of give way as we try, all this construction is going on, maybe five feet or ten feet behind our fence line, depending on whether they're front-loaded or back-loaded. I'm assuming front, so probably ten feet. But the flooding, I could just see that happen, like, everything goes downhill into Phase Two of the reserve. So I'd ask you to be mindful of that, and that leads me to my other request. Straight zoning can be problematic, and if you look just right down the street, you'll see an example of that, that I actually participated in, I think, oh, commercial zoning. What could go wrong? Everybody wants commercial, and nothing has gone wrong, but there's two buildings, and one, it's like, well, nice-looking building, bricks and all that. The other one looks like a shed that wouldn't be approved, to be a shed in the backyard of the reserve, of Chamberlain Crossing. And it'll grow on us, I guess, as we get used to driving past it, but my request of Mayor and Council would be that you, should you entertain approving this, that you require a development agreement, so that it's not left to chance. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, you said that was the...
That's the only, that's the only person.
Okay, so I would, I would say, given some of what we've learned in our public hearing, as well as not having a full council present, council, I would like to make a motion to table this vote on this ordinance.
Mayor, are you making a motion to continue the hearing, the public hearing, until November tenth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it sounded like I said something different for a moment, but, but what I said was, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing until November tenth, and at that time, we would be, we would make this, this decision, we would move on with, with voting on the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, you may vote. Well, hold, Ms. Vicki, is this, is this a vote? Do I push start voting, or does this need to be a hand raised, since this is a different kind of thing?
You can still use the voting system.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll still use voting system. This would be a motion to continue the public hearing until November tenth. Okay, the motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Okay, our next item, please.
Okay, item number six C. Discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding resolution number R-2025-079, nominating candidates for appointment to the Rockwall Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
All right, so, well, about once a year, we get the chance to make any nominations we would like to, to the Arcad Board, and we've prepared a staff summary to that effect, and if you'd like to make any nominations, we can forward those to the appraisal district. If not, other cities, I'm sure, will nominate some folks. Yeah, the voting, the voting is going to be later. This is just nominations.
This is just nominations, if you wish to make any.
Any nominations from council?
I'll make a nomination.
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
I'd like to nominate David Billings.
Okay.
I was going to say, that's not very nice of you.
I know he's got a lot of opinions on the CAD and he, it may give him an opportunity to understand the process and how that works and what the board can do, so, absolutely.
It's a tough, it's a tough job.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay. All right, is your, is your microphone on? Are you needing to speak to us?
Oh.
Oh, okay, no, that's okay, I just, I don't know if, I don't want to interrupt you. Okay, so at this, at this point, so we have one nomination. Mr. Kowex, what, what do you do with that from here?
We'll vote on the nomination and then Vicki will sign, once you sign the resolution, we'll send it over to the appraisal district.
Okay, perfect. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we nominate David Billings to the Arcad Board.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? The motion passes 4 to 2.
Just for the record, for the folks at home, if you would just say the people that voted against, because they can't see, the, the votes aren't displayed for the folks at home.
Okay, so the motion passes 4 to 2 with Councilman Hatley and Councilman Manival voting no. Okay, next item, please.
Next will be 6D, discuss, consider and take any necessary action regarding resolution number R 2025-080, demonstrating the city's intent to establish a Property Assessed Clean Energy Act program and setting a public hearing.
Okay, good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm Matt Wavering, Director of Economic Development, and I'm going to give a presentation for you all on the CPACE program. This is a financing program that is an economic development tool, which is why I'm giving you the presentation today. CPACE stands for Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. And it's a financing program, it's an economic development tool that was established in Texas in 2013 with the PACE Act. It's in local government code, Chapter 399, if you're interested. It is a state-enabled, locally administered financing program and it's a tool to help commercial property owners fund energy efficient water conservation and renewable energy improvements to their buildings. This supports both new construction as well as renovations to existing buildings. Key features, 100% of the upfront financing for eligible improvements and eligible improvements, I have a slide for that too, but that's basically, those are those building improvements that we'll be, we'll be talking about. Long-term repayment plan over the life of the improvements and it's done, it's fixed through a voluntary property tax assessment. Because of the assessment, it's a non-recourse financing, it's not personally guaranteed, it is transferable upon the sale of a property. There's flexible payment, prepayment options and it does carry lower interest rates than most mezzanine financing. So mezzanine financing is when you've got your equity investment, you've got your, your base loan for a project and then you've got that last little gap you've got to fill in and a lot of times those interest rates can be, you know, 14, 15, 16%. This is a piece that can fill that gap. Eligible projects, it's only eligible for commercial properties, no residential, single family condos, they do not qualify for this program. Qualified improvements, so HVAC, lighting, insulation, that would include the building's envelope, windows, water systems, irrigation systems. So I mentioned 100% of that is available to be financed. In general, you might find that 30, 35% of a building, a brand new building's expenses are wrapped up in these items. And so if you're looking at building to code, there's a efficiency standard for code and then if you want to go a step above in any of these areas, then you can then use that cost to finance these, those items in the, in the project you're building or renovating. So if you've got an existing building and you have to replace all the windows, that can be an expensive undertaking and so that piece can then be financed through this CPACE program. Benefits to the owners and developers, it increases property values and then ultimately the net operating income. It improves their cash flow and their debt service coverage and as I mentioned, it's a low-cost alternative to mezzanine financing. For the businesses or the tenants that are actually occupying the space because they have more fuel-efficient building systems in there, they will have lower utility costs and hopefully lower maintenance costs as well. Lastly, to the city of fate, what does that do? Well, if you have, if you have more fuel, fuel efficient or energy or water efficient systems, you're reducing utility demand on our system. So that's why there's a picture of a water tower there. It does enhance the property values. If it enhances the property values, it also enhances our property tax revenue. The ability for new businesses to move into what used to be older buildings that have now been renovated, it can help boost that local economy. And then it also helps with business retention and expansion. Texas traditionally is, you know, find the next piece of green field to develop, but this offers an opportunity for an existing business owner who perhaps owner occupies or leases a building to renovate and bring that property up to the 21st century and stick around and stay in fate. So it's a tool for retention. Lastly, biggest feature for us is there's zero cost to the city and zero cost to the The program itself, there is some administration involved with it. The PACE Act says that administration is a local government function, meaning it's city of fate's function. However, it does allow for third-party authorized representatives, so we're allowed to delegate that responsibility to a third party. That third party can then handle the initiation of the financing, maintaining all the contracts, all the required compliance, the type of things that staff would require to do. And all of that effort is funded by admin fees that were paid at the time of the issuance of the loan by the actual owner, the borrower in the program. So the, we are talking to Lone Star PACE and I actually have some representatives from Lone Star PACE here today. So if there's any difficult questions that I can't answer, I'm going to make Ryan McCormick come up and answer them for me. That's what I get to do. This organization's based in Frisco, they've been around since 2017 and they've done over $346 million in transactions. They also are the third-party administrator for 19 counties and eight cities, closest one being the, our neighbor to the west, the city of Rockwell, who has a similar PACE program. So a couple of things that has to happen in order to put a PACE program in place. By the way, this is a program that covers all of the city of fate and so future, future developers and existing building owners would have access to this form of financing once it's established. So tonight, the action that's being requested of you today is to approve the resolution of intent, which just simply says we intend to put the program together. And the second thing is to publish the PACE program report. So that was in your packet and it's also already been published because we published the agenda packet last week. So mission accomplished on that. If you all decide to approve the resolution of intent tonight, then this will be back on the November 10th meeting and we will hold a public hearing and we'll have a resolution to actually formally establish the PACE program. And then the last piece of that is there will be an ordinance and a contract to approve the agreement with that third-party administrator, so in this case, Lone Star PACE. So, Fast and Furious, but I wanted to summarize as quickly as possible. You can take any questions that you have and then all the harder ones I'll give to Ryan.
Questions from council? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Kowex.
So the Public Facility Corporation, the MDD could also use this tool, correct?
No, public, public buildings are excluded from this.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we could not use it at City Hall either.
All right. That's all right.
I got an odd.
This is already an energy and water efficient building.
Right.
We just didn't apply for the magical label.
Okay, any other, Ms. Huffman?
So I'm a little curious why we've, why we haven't done this before.
Great question, yeah. So this is a tool that I have not utilized myself and when I heard about it, I heard about it because we have a developer in fate right now that has an industrial office warehouse project that they're considering using this program. And so obviously when they, when they learned about it and they said, hey, this is a great fit for us, and then I learned about it and said, hey, this is a great fit for a lot of users, that's what brought this forth today. So, yeah, so we have a, we have a developer that wants to use this tool, first of all, and the second part of it is, I like what, what they're doing here. I think a lot of this, and Ryan maybe could speak to this, but where interest rates were in the past, there was maybe less need for this program and we're seeing a little bit more now with interest rates remaining elevated for a little bit longer. You know, a lot of the development projects you've seen maybe had their financing secured years ago and now that they've been elevated a little bit longer, there's that gap, that problem of that capital stack where you've got to fill in the, fill in the hole there. And so, does that answer your question? That's, that's why.
And my other question is, so if we start working with Lone Star and something kind of goes wrong, do we have a way of changing that in the agreement?
Yeah, so I think I'll have to look a little bit closer at the agreement and I think our city attorney has given it a once-over so far, but.
Yeah, so, and that would be, the agreement would be considered in a future council meeting, but yes, there's a way to terminate that agreement.
Yeah, and there are two third-party administrators in the state. This is, this is the one we've been talking to and looked at and they are, we vetted them internally based upon what we could find, but you know, honestly, all the documents look almost exactly the same between both of them.
Mr. Hatley?
I'm sorry, I was taking a note when you mentioned a third party on there. Who appoints that third party and what exactly would they, what was that?
So we would be doing that, or you would be doing that, Mr. Hatley.
Okay.
So we would. Yeah, so, so the act allows, actually puts that on the city of fate to administer the program, but every city that enacts this program also has the ability to outsource that job to a third-party administrator. So the third-party administrator that we're talking to is Lone Star PACE, is their name. And at the next November 10th meeting, you would be considering that contract with that group.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
I will make a motion that we pass resolution R 2025-080. I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Okay, please vote. Motion passes 6 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please, Ms. Vicki.
Next will be agenda item 6E, and this is discuss, consider and take any necessary action regarding ordinance number O 2025-042, which regulates the distribution of handbills, also known as bag flyers.
This is Omar's first council presentation.
Oh, you shouldn't have done that.
It's a great, it's a great, it's a great subject. We'll give, we'll give him a good, we'll give him a good test drive.
Oh goodness. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Omar Williams, I'm the Assistant to the City Manager and today I'm going to provide the overview, give a little, little bit of a background and an overview of this proposed ordinance pertaining to the regulation of, the distribution of bag flyers, also known as, or throughout this, I will refer to it as a commercial handbill. But just a little bit of background, so this was initially brought forth a few months ago, back in May, residents started to notice this, yeah, flyers, bag flyers being distributed throughout subdivisions throughout the city. And the issue at hand, it's not the, the material that's being distributed, it's just the, the way in which it was being distributed and ultimately where the bag flyers were, were ending up. So as you can see, and I have pictures throughout this presentation, so great examples, but there are instances in which the flyers would end up in the street or on the sidewalk and in the, in the long run, stay there so long to the point to where they would start to degrade or just the condensation in the bag would break down the flyer, contributing to just litter. So to, in short, both slides just clearly outline what the, does this proposed ordinance allow and what it does not allow. Just to go through it, so hand-to-hand, direct, direct hand-to-hand distribution to the resident or occupant, placement of the handbill on the premises. So pretty much is saying that we, we want to make sure that the handbills get onto the property and they're secured in a manner in which they won't be carried into the right of way or somewhere down the road. And as you're looking through these, you know, notice that the, the emphasis isn't on the content itself, it's just the, the way in which, again, the bills are being distributed and how they're being placed. And this is an example of one that didn't quite make it all the way onto the property, so easily susceptible to being carried away by the wind or.
That one's safe, isn't it, though? It's technically safe.
Yes.
Yeah, see, see, this is a staged photo. So we placed, we placed it in the, in the ideal location, so he's just barely on the property, so.
Yes.
This one counts. This one's safe.
Absolutely.
Legitimate. We'll show you one that didn't make it.
This one didn't quite make it.
This is not a staged photo.
So yes, this one didn't quite make it and again, just speaking to what isn't allowed, you don't want the bills placed on the property in a way which it could easily be carried away, blown into the sidewalk, streets or other public spaces. And then also, again, this isn't, this, this doesn't overrule federal law, so just reinforcing federal law, using mailboxes for handbill delivery, you can't place those on there. So as far as enforcement, this would result in a Class C misdemeanor with each handbill counting as a separate offense and the bill, if approved, would declare, declared, it would be, so these, these bag flyers would be declared a public nuisance or litter if they're in violation. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Nice work. So I do have a question, as far as the violations go, would it be a violation if, if we, and I don't know if that means a police officer or somebody sees the individual deposit the bag, because I'm, I'm looking at it going, somebody, you know, places a bag even, even up, I was looking at the ordinance up where it's secure, the idea is that you have to have the, the item secured, but if the wind were to blow that before the occupant of the home returned and it blew out into the street, if we see it in the street, do we look at that and say, let's find out who, who this comes from and that's now a violation? Or would it only be if we watched as that was thrown into the street?
That's a great question.
Especially if each handbill counts. Well, I'm just thinking too, I'm just thinking too, I mean, even, even when you're, when you're walking around, because I think I read too, that this would apply to political flyers as well, albeit the Supreme Court has consistently ruled that political language is protected, but, but just hypothetically, if you go, you know, you're going door-to-door and you're securing them, somebody goes into their home and, and you know, that trash falls onto the floor and then blows out into the street, does that come back on the individual who is responsible for the handbill?
Absolutely. I would, I'm going to defer to Jennifer on this one. I'd say.
Good answer, good answer.
So I'm looking at, at B2 and it talks about the placement or depositing in a manner reasonably certain to secure or prevent such handbill from being blown or drifted about, yeah, drifted about such premises. And so I'm certainly not saying what great cases the chief can make on these, but, but I would say that if you see something in the street, it could be a car pushing it into the street when it backs out of its driveway. And so I think the better ticket would be one in which you saw them throw it in the way where it's not secured. Now, I would like to point out Omar and Stephen and I, fate merely considering a change in the ordinance caused the company that does distribution all over the United States to contact us and we had several great meetings. distribution all over the United States to contact us, and we had several great meetings with them, and, and though it's not part of this ordinance and shouldn't be part of this ordinance, for those residents who don't want these thrown on their properties, obviously the ordinance allows you to post for that, and that makes it a violation to throw, but also, and Stephen and Omar, correct me if I'm misstating this, but also if you open up those bags, there's a contact number on there, so an individual property owner can actually get their, their house removed from the distribution as well. So, that's something else that an individual property owner could do, if they wanted to. Of course, people like Stephen who like the coupons would never do that, so.
I'm just more asking if one is found in the road, which would be in a, in a place of violation, is that enough just finding it in the road to go after the, the person who threw the bag?
I would think probably not.
Okay. Who, and, and again, I'm, I'm sorry, just, we, we were talking about civil liberties in our government class today and, and the application of the law. When we say probably not, what, what is, I mean, I, I would, I'm just, I'm just hung up on that one, because I, I just, I do not think it would be good to have an ordinance that if we could not confirm that this was placed by the individual. If we watch somebody do it, I'm fine with it, if that's what the language in the ordinance says. But if the language in the ordinance is, because I've seen people walk past, I, I've done it, where I just walk past what's, what's in the yard, and I'm like, oh, I'll get that later, I'm, you know, I've got kids in my hands or something like that, and I forget about it, then the wind blows it into the street. Is that now potentially a Class C misdemeanor for the thrower of the bag?
So, Mayor, thank you for pointing out my lawyerly equivocating, so I'll be more clear, which is, I would not think that is a good ticket if written, because it says that place or deposit in a way that would cause it to blow, and so you haven't seen them place or deposit it. You've just seen it in the road, and you don't know if that's where the person placed or deposited it.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hatley?
What if they just, I mean, I'm not going to say that they're going to do this, but what if a second company comes in and just says, I'm not going to use bags, I'm just going to roll them up into a rubber band? Would, would the ordinance cover that?
Yes, this ordinance covers, it doesn't have to be in a bag. We've just referred to it as a bag flyers. I don't think the word bag is even anywhere in the ordinance.
And, and it says here, each handbill counts as a separate offense. I mean, a lot of these people probably delivering these are probably pretty young kids. They could be developing, I mean, you know, let's say you hit 10%, you know, and don't quite get it over the threshold. I used to throw papers when I was a kid, and I was pretty good at it. But let's say 10%, that could be a pretty expensive series of fines for, for a young, for, for, for somebody who's young. Is it, I mean, do we go after the person who throws it, or we go after the, the employer, the, the, what's it, save.com, I think it is?
Yeah, so you could go after either. The, the provision that each handbill counts as a separate offense is very normal in all codes, in our code, so like, each piece of litter is a separate offense. Each piece, I could go through the code and tell you over and over again where something's a separate offense. Most likely, that's not how the tickets would be written. I don't want to speak for the chief, but, and also, this company, as far as we know, the one company who, who distributes these in Fate and other cities around here have been very responsive, and, and I think what they've said to us is just give us a call and, and we'll solve the problem if we've got a problem employee. And so, I think that probably will be our first step before we even write a ticket.
Okay, and so this would not affect in any way any sort of political literature, I mean, unless it just wound up in, somebody just dropped it in the street or dropped it on the sidewalk?
We're looking it up. Usually what we would see is, while we're waiting for Jennifer to answer the question, is we'll get, I'd imagine, if the, the company's been on their best behavior, which we really appreciate, so even the discussion of having the ordinance has really helped move that in, in that direction. But what would, I imagine what we typically get is, we'll get a complaint from a citizen, so we'll get pictures from citizens and saying, hey, these guys are not, you know, they're not throwing them up into the yards, they're just dropping them in the curb again. And so, they'll, they'll send us some pictures.
Yeah, I did a lot of fundraising things too, from Eagle Scouts and things like that. Hey, we're selling mulch. They'll drop off flyers. Here, call us in, you know, we do this, our troops raising, so I would be concerned that if any of those were also included.
So, this applies to all commercial and non-commercial handbills. So, this would include political flyers, this would include nonprofits, soliciting funds, and remember, all this is about, because again, this is not about the substance of what's written on the page. All this is about is, if I, as a homeowner, have a sign that's prominent that says, don't leave stuff here, you have to honor it. And, and if you are, you know, I, I don't think I've ever seen a political flyer being thrown on a driveway. I don't think I've ever seen that. But I'm not, the first time for everything, but if somebody chose to do that, and it was not, you know, done in a way where it could be secured so it wasn't blown around, that would be a problem, whether, whether it was a political flyer or not.
So, as long as they make it onto the property, then all, then it's completely legal?
Well, and it has to be secured in such a way, and so, for instance, these bag flyers are heavy enough where if you throw them onto the, onto the, onto the driveway, they're not going to blow into the street. If you're throwing one rolled piece of paper, you know, arguably, that's a problem, whether you get it on the sidewalk or not, I mean, whether you get it on the driveway or not. But, but really, all this is meant to do is strengthen the ordinance that Fate has so that we don't have littering in our, in our community.
So, as long as there's no sign, it makes it to the porch, and if it goes on the porch, then it's completely legal?
Yes, if it's secure in such a way so it can't blow around, yes.
Okay.
And to be clear, just past the sidewalk, just getting onto the property.
Yep. Cross that thread, okay.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I got a motion. So, so this is basically saying that these folks, as long as they're throwing these little bags of advertising across the sidewalk, onto the driveway, that's fine?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I'm just, I mean, I don't care if I say this for, after the motion. In my mind, it didn't go far enough. It, the, the stuff that gets thrown in driveways typically things like newspapers and things I subscribe for. I'm not subscribing for this stuff. If they want to come drop it off on the door or on the porch, that's one thing, but leaving into the driveway, in, in my mind, we're not going far enough. And I, I feel like I would speak for most of the citizens in, in the city that, that for the most part, this is unsolicited. And, and for the most part, if it does get picked, picked up, it probably just goes straight into the trash. I, I, I don't know that. I've, I've not had anybody reach out to me on this particular issue, but I do know that these sit out for days upon days without being touched. So, so, in, in my mind, it is littering. So, so my ask would be, it, it, it's up to the council to decide if, if this goes far enough or not, but my ask would be to, i, i, if these are being delivered, they need to be secured on the porch and, and not in the driveway. I just don't think this goes far enough. And legally, I don't know if we can do that or not, but, but I, I just don't think we're going far enough to secure the cleanliness, cleanliness and beauty of our city with this ordinance.
Right, so we, we looked at the case law, and we looked at surrounding cities' ordinances, and we felt like this is as far as we could go, given the state of the law.
Ms. Chen?
I've heard from several people within Wood Creek. They've made posts after post after post, and they have done what you suggested, Jennifer, which is calling the company and saying, we do not want you to throw it there, and they are continuing to do it. So, it is a problem. What, if anything, do we have as a council or even as a homeowner to ensure that the company is actually following what you're saying and not dropping off materials that are saying, they're saying they have called and it's still happening. So, I know, I did, I had never heard that you can actually post a sign in your yard, so that's something else, I guess, I can tell them, but this is talked about a lot online, the fact that these newspapers or whatever, and it's unsolicited. Things that we're not asking for, and they're just being chunked in the yards, and people don't want it, and they're asking the company to not do it. The company's doing it anyway.
I apologize, we're having a little sidebar, but maybe staff can come up with a process where, once a resident makes that complaint and it's not followed, we can, they can fill out a form online and we can, because we now have a contact with this company, and we can follow up with that. Because I do believe that staff feels, and I don't want to speak for any staff, but staff feels like the company, and we're, you know, we're talking to the executives, right, but that the company seriously wants to comply with that, so...
Yeah, I would, I would love any kind of information to give to the residents, because this is something that they're complaining about a lot, so.
Okay, so do I have a, a motion on that, or are, are we saying we want to...
I mean, something is better than nothing, but I feel like Scott, and I think, yeah, I mean, I, I feel the same way as him. I just, if what you're saying is state law won't allow it, then something's better than nothing. So, I mean, I'll make a motion for it, but I, I'm not necessarily thinking that this is going to fix the problem.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, if, if this is the extent of the state law, I'm guessing is, as far as Mr. Kovak sending this back to you and saying, hey, can we get staff to, to maybe beef up the ordinance, that's probably not going to, at that point, we're, we're not going to be able to do anything with that. Is that correct?
I would love to, but I think the legal folks would tell me no.
Okay.
So, Mayor, Mayor Council, maybe just because, like Jennifer said, we've been in these conversations. What we saw before this was even considered and brought forward, which initiated them calling us, was, and my wife and I walk through our Wood Creek neighborhood all the time. They're all over the street, they're all over the sidewalk. I will say, from our experience, it has significantly gotten better. I'm not saying it's perfect, I'm not saying there aren't some that are missed, which, which shows that the company legitimately is trying to do it. And if, and if there was ever a time where we started to initiate all these types of fines, they would probably pull out at that point. It's probably not worth the risk, their words to us. So, what I'm saying is, I think they're absolutely incentivized to try to comply with this. I think we'll, if, so, if it's all right with you, we'll bring this concern to them specifically about, hey, show us how you're tracking this. How, how, when people call you, what's, how do you know, and how does a driver know and have this list of, and let them kind of explain that process to us. I think we can create that form of, they, if people feel like they aren't being responded to, fill out this form, and we'll now have this list that we can send to them, and let's see where we get with theirs. So far, we've had good luck with them being responsive to our requests.
Okay, I like hearing that. Ms. Huffman, I know you had pushed your mic earlier. Did you want to speak?
Well, I was going to ask if it's possible, if we pass this ordinance now, can the ordinance be revised and improved if we have better language in the future?
Oh, of course. Nothing a council ever does is final, and you can always revise something in the future.
Mr. Manaval?
I tried to get in touch with this company when this first came up in May. I, I wanted to give them a heads up. I was trying to be somewhat helpful. I worked for a print advertising company for years, and I hated to see them totally shot down. And I left messages, and they, they never got back to me. And they were, they were just a tough organization to get through to. So, I can imagine when you're just going to a little website and clicking, don't, don't throw in my yard, I can imagine. I just wonder if we've got some contacts and we've got people that want to make this better, if maybe we could put something on the city's website, if, that, if you're having difficulty with having the, having it, sort of getting on their no, no deliver list, that you can get in touch with the city.
Yep, I think, I think we can do it. We, we did, as you mentioned, we made, we made contact with corporate offices, I think based out of St. Louis. They go all over the country. They use third-party subcontractors to actually do the distribution.
Is this RR Donnelly? Is that the name?
I don't remember that being the name, but, well, I can, I can report back to that. But, but we, yeah, we have good established contact, both on their legal side as well as their executive side, as well as the Dallas kind of market manager who was the one that was driving weekly through town during these complaints to make sure that quality assurance was being attended to. So, I think we got the right people at the table. We'll, we'll proceed and continue to follow up on the concerns.
Okay, so do I, Mr. Hatley?
One more question. Once the citation is given, whose responsibility is it to remove the paper?
So, the ordinance declares a, a nuisance, and so we can do, we can do self-help at that point.
Okay.
And just pick up the litter.
We, we would do it, or they would do it, or the homeowner would do it?
Well, if it's litter in the street, we, we could pick it up.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 0-2025-042.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Seeing as we had our discussion beforehand, we'll go ahead and vote now. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. All right, next agenda item, please.
Next will be item number seven, Mayor, Council, and City Manager Reports.
All right, we'll start with you, Ms. Chen.
I just wanted to thank all of the city staff that went way, way, way above and beyond during Celebrate Fate and the prayer vigil that we had a couple weeks ago on a Sunday night. I didn't realize how hard they had all been working until I saw one of, well, two of the guys that were out there, and they were with the Parks Department, and they were so nice, and they were just talking about how the day before they had, they worked like 17 hours, and so, all of a sudden, I was like, oh, my goodness, y'all, poor things. But I just wanted to say thank you so much to all the police, the fire, everybody who came out and helped with the Parks Department, and I'm probably missing a whole bunch of departments, and I apologize, but all of y'all, thank y'all so much for all the people that went above and beyond. It really was noticed by all of us, so thank you so much.
Mr. Kelly?
Celebrate Fate was really an awesome experience. It gets better and better every year. The, the planning that went into it, just to space everything out so that there weren't just masses of people gathered in certain areas, and, and to where there was a little bit more space was fantastic, whoever, whoever's idea that was. It was, it was great, forced everybody to walk around a little bit too, and we can always walk around a little bit more. But specifically to staff and everybody that went over and above to put that on, the work is not unrecognized, is greatly appreciated, and I thank everybody, everybody that involved in that, everybody that was out there that day, everybody that was involved in putting stuff up, cleaning stuff up afterwards, just huge props. Thanks for all you do.
Mr. Manaval?
Yes, I don't know who to thank directly, but the Celebrate Fate was incredible. So, I felt like I was in a small town, Mayberry.
Okay.
And the prayer thing the next day was amazing. I, it reminded me, the church I went to when I was young had a Sunday night service that had lots of singing, and sometimes went long, and it, it kind of took me back. So, I thought that was a really nice thing, so.
Mr. Hatley?
I would very much like to thank the staff for Celebrate Fate. It, it does get better every year. Some neighbors behind me went for their first time, and they raved about moving here. I mean, they literally were just beside themselves as how cool it was. And when they got out there, they actually saw some of their other neighbors out there who conveniently kept it to themselves, but, but they're enjoy, they're enjoying living in Fate, they're enjoying living in a small community. So, thank you to the staff for all the hard work you did on that. I would like to thank the DPS for the great job they did on the, on what happened over the weekend. They did an incredible job, especially coordinating with other units. That's the greatest thing in the world, is when you can get different, different units to be able to, to coordinate and, and solve problems. It's also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I don't know how many people have had relatives who've been affected by it. I have. So, I'd like, you know, to, if there's a walk, I know the Susan Coleman Walk is, is coming up, and get involved, donate money, time, anything that you can on that. It's, it's very, very important. And once again, thanks to the city staff for the, the prayer vigil. I mean, y'all improvised, and we thought it was going to rain, and everything got turned around. Michael and Cody got everything moved in here relatively quickly. I mean, like I said, I've worked on several dozen film sets. We couldn't have moved to a cover set, in fact, when, when the, the rain would come. So, pretty incredible, but I'd like to thank you all for that.
Ms. Huffman?
Well, I'm sorry that I must celebrate Fate, but I've heard lots of great things about it, so thank you for all your hard work on that. I also noticed a community survey on the main page of the website, so I want to encourage people to participate in that. I also have thought about how lucky we are to live in a place that's so well taken care of by our public safety. When you hear about everything that went on in Dallas this weekend, it's pretty scary stuff. When you hear about everything that went on in Dallas this weekend, it's pretty scary stuff, but we don't have to deal with that here, thank goodness. And then finally, I was a little disappointed that the, um, shades were down because there's a harvest moon and a super moon tonight. And I thought maybe we would be able to see a little bit of that as it came up, but we'll try to notice that as we leave.
Ms. Huffman, you do have the authority to raise any of these blinds that you wish. You, nobody's gonna tell you, you can't. Uh, okay, I think that Celebrate Fate was incredible. I also thought the youth entrepreneur program that we did, that was a lot of fun, getting to see what some of the, the different young people were doing in our community. My daughter participated in that. That was awesome. I really enjoy seeing how we're adding to each and every, uh, year. That's, that's phenomenal. And it, and it just shows, I think, that we have a, a staff that's committed and excited to, you know, making it better every year, so thank you for that. The vigil that we held the following night is echoing Ms. Chin's sentiments, was put together kinda last minute. It was, it was kinda fun to just be like, hey, this, this is what we wanna do, and everybody kinda made it happen, so that was really cool. And it, and it really just shows, I think, kind of the, the parallel, I was reflecting on it, the parallel between Celebrate Fate a fun and, and lively event, and then what, what the vigil represents after a, a very somber and saddening, uh, uh, experience to happen to us nationally. But, uh, but just the fact that, that we made it all happen here, right in fate, that's pretty special. And so I'm very appreciative of everybody who made that work. Mr. Kovacs?
Yes, sir, just one item. Um, tomorrow night is Texas Night Out. And so Tuesday, 7:00 PM, starting at 7:00 PM at Joe Burger Park, uh, Fate DPS will be out there, and we will, um, have some festivities for the public. So Texas Night Out, kind of a version of National Night Out, which is earlier in the year, but, uh, because it's hot, we do, we do Texas Night Out in October. So, Texas Night Out, 7:00 PM, Joe Burger Park. Chief says thumbs up. Anything else?
Five thirty to start.
Oh, 5:30, not?
Thirty to seven thirty.
Oh, sorry about that. Five thirty, don't, don't show up at seven. Five thirty to seven thirty. Okay, great. That's it, sir.
Okay, next item, please.
Next is Agenda Item Eight, which is Executive Session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, the City Council will recess into Executive Session Closed Meeting to discuss the following. A, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. One, Planning and Zoning Commissioner Ashley McDaniel.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, action for Agenda Item 8A1.
I would like to make a motion for 8A1, that we remove Ashley McDaniel from the Planning and Zoning Commission for excessive absences.
I'll second.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, you may begin voting. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next will be Agenda Item 10, adjournment.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All right, please vote.